Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting. I respectfully call the City Council meeting to order and ask our clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno. Burkhardt?
Here.
No, here.
There he is. Okay. Good to see him. Hey, look at that.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kasarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Maladra, here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We have a full complement of council members tonight. I would like to ask Alderman Craig Maladra, our newest grandfather. Congratulations to Craig and his granddaughter Eleanor Jane. Craig, you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and this will be recorded forever, so we'll show Eleanor this later.
Not sure how to do that remotely, but we'll give it a shot. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Craig, please share with us, how's Eleanor doing?
Eleanor is doing fine. I haven't seen her since last Tuesday, but as of last Tuesday, she was a six-pound, 12-ounce bundle of joy.
That's exciting. Mom and Dad are doing well?
They are.
Yeah, and how's Grandma Karen doing?
Beaming. I can see it from here.
Beaming. That's good. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, prior to beginning our items of business, I would like to ask everyone to join me in the City Council in a moment of silence to recognize two friends in our community who passed away last week. The council is aware of these losses. I emailed them, I believe it was Friday. First, former Alderman Denny Cabella passed away. I had the pleasure of speaking with his daughter. Denny was a retired air traffic controller, served as Third Ward Alderman from 1981 to 1989, and then as clerk from 1993 to 2005. What's really interesting is Denny was also a volunteer firefighter for the city of Geneva, beginning in 1967, and to the best of our knowledge, records indicate he served throughout the '70s as well. Denny's daughter, Kim, indicated that there will be a celebration of Denny's life later in the spring. And the second community friend and leader we lost is Dr. Peter Lee. Dr. Lee leaves behind his lovely wife Helen Chan, his sister Filana Lee, and his mother, whom we all know and love dearly, Jenny Lee of Gen Ho. So on behalf of the Lees and behalf of the Cabelas, we offer a moment of silence to let them know that we're thinking about them and that we share in their grief. Thank you all very much. Item 3A, folks, is the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023, city of Geneva and TRICOM Central Dispatch budgets. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Alderman Marx makes that motion. Alderman Mayor makes the second. All in favor of opening the public hearing? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bruno, aye.
Maladra, aye.
I record there are no votes. The public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 budget is open. This hearing is for those who are either attending live here in the audience or online. Anyone have any questions about the proposed budget? Anyone online, Ms. Dawkins, or Mr. McCready?
No one raising their hand at this time.
I'll be happy to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Alderman Kasarag makes that motion, seconded by Alderman Mayor. All in favor of closing the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 budget? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bruno, aye.
Maladra, aye.
The public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, is closed. Item 3B is to proclaim February as Black History Month in the city of Geneva. Is there a motion?
Bruno, some moves.
Swanson makes a motion. Alderman Bruno makes the second. With respect to Black History Month here in Geneva, right, Ben? We have a brief video, as we've done a couple of years now, just sharing some information regarding the history of black Americans and, of course, the extraordinary contributions they make. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, and I think all of you would agree, that American history is black history. So with that, Mr. Collins?
For most of America's history, a system of racial segregation dictated every aspect of life. In no area was this more true than in healthcare.
You think about the civil rights movement, you think about housing, public accommodation, education, but I think the story hasn't been told often about what happened in terms of institutions of medicine. That's an unrevealed part of the history.
In 1965, as the civil rights struggle escalated, black Americans were in the streets fighting for justice and equality. They were being attacked and killed, but a different kind of violence was taking thousands of black lives every year. Segregated medical care was a brutal reality for black Americans.
Negroes had one war. You were dying from cancer. If you were there to have a baby or whatever, you're on the same war.
Everything was segregated, not just the hospitals, but physicians' practices. I was the only black pediatrician in the entire state.
People were dying as a result of that segregated system.
The 1964 Civil Rights Act tied federal funds to desegregation. Now Medicare, with its promise of federal funds, created an opportunity to end the shocking inequalities in medical care. This is the remarkable story of how civil rights activists and the federal government, working together, desegregated thousands of hospitals practically overnight, bringing life-saving care to millions of Americans. This little-known story reveals the role of countless people who never took center stage but whose shoulders we stand on.
Ladies and gentlemen, we chose that snippet, if you will, because it corresponds, I think beautifully, with the theme of this year's Black History Month, which, of course, as all of you know, is black health and wellness. So if you have a chance to watch that documentary, of course, we encourage you to do so. Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this City Council, and those items can be acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Marx makes that motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Mayor. Questions or comments on the Omnibus Agenda? Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The Omnibus Agenda has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Let's see here. According to my scorecard, item 10, municipal bills per payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $2,107,458.77.
Mayor Bruno moves that we pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in all of our packets and on the City Council website. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderwoman Burkhardt. Are there any questions? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Item 10, municipal bills per payment have been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. I would be remiss if I didn't ask Alderman Bruno. Alderman Bruno, you are a recent grandfather, too, and how's everybody doing?
Everyone's well, and we're extra cautious COVID protocols so as not to bring it to our grandson, but he's hitting all the milestones, and he's a great little boy.
And his name again?
Joseph Robert Bruno.
Nice.
Joey.
Oh, he goes by Joey?
Yes.
I like it. Has he asked about Eleanor?
We'll get him together at some point.
Plenty of time for that. We jump to item 12, folks, presentation of ordinances, resolutions, petitions, and bids. Item 12A is Consider Ordinance Number 2022-05, granting a variation to decrease the required street yard setback along Jefferson Street from 20 feet to 0 feet for property located at 140 North Harrison Street. Is there a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion. Alderman Marx makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the applicant is seeking to replace the existing porch due to its deteriorating condition and replace it with a new, slightly smaller porch. The reduction in size would ensure the existing encroachment in the Jefferson Street right-of-way is eliminated, as the new replacement porch could be completely located on private property. To permit the reconstruction of the porch, a variation is being sought to allow a new porch to maintain the current porch's non-conforming encroachment into the street yard setback along Jefferson Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their January 13, 2022 meeting, and we do have Director DeGroot with us this evening if there are any additional questions.
Are there any questions for Director DeGroot? Alderman Bruno, sir, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For Director DeGroot. What was the vote at the Planning and Zoning Commission?
It was a unanimous vote to approve.
I couldn't hear.
Sorry, it was unanimous to approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Swanson, sir?
I just wanted to say that I live in the neighborhood and received a notification and received no comments from any neighbors, so I believe that there is no opposition to pursuing this. It's been in process for a long time, going back to August, and so I look forward to this vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kasarag?
Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes.
Do they?
It's up to the applicant. If you'd like to say a few words, madam?
A few words or anything? No pressure if they don't want to.
No, I don't have any questions. If you have questions, I can answer.
There you go.
Okay. I do not.
Anyone else from the dais or in the cozy confines of home? If not, we do have a motion by Alderman... Time out. Bruno... No, excuse me, Alderman Swanson, and a second by Alderman Marx. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, item 12A has been approved. Item 12B is to consider... Madam, thank you very much. If you wish to stick around, please do. If you want to sneak out, we do not blame you, so... Item 12B is Consider Ordinance Number 2022-06, amending the boundaries of the Fisher Farms' planned unit development. Is there a motion? Alderman Marx makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Burkhardt. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the summary that I'm providing is actually for items B and C, just for terms of expediency. The applicant is requesting amendments to boundaries of the Fisher Farms' and Delnor Community Planned Unit Developments and site plan approval for an addition to the existing cancer center. The applicant has acquired two parcels for potential future expansion of the hospital campus and is seeking to incorporate these properties into the Delnor Community PUD. One parcel needs to be removed from the Fisher Farms' PUD before it can be incorporated into the Delnor Community PUD. There are no plans for development at this time. The proposed expansion of the cancer center is needed to accommodate additional equipment for medical procedures as demand for services has increased. The expansion is part of an overall renovation to the existing cancer center, which was built in 2012. Overall, the expansion fits within the current regulations governing the facility and the hospital campus. For more information, you can refer to the packet. There was quite an extensive report from the Community Development Department. And then I would like to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendments to the boundaries of the Fisher Farms' and the Delnor Community PUDs and site plan approval for expansion of the cancer center at their meeting on January 13, 2022. And again, we have Director DeGroot with us to answer any additional questions, and I do also believe that we have a representative from the applicant here as well.
Questions for Director DeGroot or the applicant? Alderman Kilburg, sir?
I believe some time ago, several years ago, the parcel along Kesslinger, there was some discussion as it related to the development of that parcel, and there were concerns over a curb cut and accessibility. Could you speak to that at all and how that might enter into this? David?
Sure. It was, wow, probably 10 years ago now. It was the Meadowbrook Manor Nursing Home Facility that was proposed there. I think it was about 150 beds that were proposed, and the access to Kesslinger was restricted to a right-in, right-out at that location. And at the time, they were negotiating with the hospital to allow for an interconnection to Delnor Drive.
Access to the north through their parking.
Right, for a secondary emergency access. That project has since, obviously, not been constructed, and now the parcel's been acquired by the hospital.
Do you see at any point in time that a curb cut might be permitted?
I could imagine a right-in, right-out being allowed in a similar fashion that was approved 10 years ago.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I need.
Anyone else in the dais or virtually on item 12B as in boy? Does the applicant wish to say anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you. That's two in a row, no thank you, so that's good. There's no other questions from the council? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Item 12B has been approved with a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent. Thank you. And the invitation goes to you as well, if you want to stick around. Oh, forgive me, there's one more item, so stick around. Item 12C, Consider Ordinance Number 2022-07, amending the boundaries of the Delnor Community Planned Unit Development and granting site plan approval for a 15,570-square-foot addition to the Delnor Cancer Center. Is there a motion? Swanson makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Burkhardt. Ms. Dawkins, anything else you want to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. I sense a trend. Any questions from the dais for Director DeGroot? Sir, anything you wish to add? Try this again?
Nothing further.
Nothing? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, item 12C as in Charlie, has passed. Item 12D as in David, Consider Resolution Number 2022-04, ratifying the assignment and assumption of the master purchase and sale agreement by and between the city of Geneva and our friends at Metra. Is there a motion? Alderman Mayor makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cavan. Ms. Dawkins?
So on January 25, the city received notice that Metra and the Union Pacific Railroad had executed the master purchase and sale agreement for the sale of three UP stations to Metra. Pursuant to that agreement, Metra will assign said contract directly to each municipality so they may complete their due diligence and closing in direct coordination with the Union Pacific. The master agreement required that Metra and the city execute an assignment and assumption agreement by February 4, 2022, which was prior to the next scheduled city council meeting. Upon consultation with legal counsel, the city administrator executed the assignment and assumption agreement under the implied authority provided under Resolution 2021-89, authorizing the city administrator to execute an IGA for the transfer of real estate. The resolution under consideration tonight is to ratify that action taken by the city administrator, otherwise known as me. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
On item 12D, are there any questions for City Administrator Dawkins? Alderman Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, I was looking at the diagram, and I think this popped up originally. The red boundaries in the diagram, the Exhibit A under here, some of that within the red, which is the sale area according to this, is not the train station already privately held?
Yes, that's correct. The map is a very poorly drawn box, which is part of why we need to do our due diligence to have it surveyed and all of that, because the actual building is not included, and that is owned by another party.
Okay, and I see a railroad right-of-way that goes under the Dodson Place Apartments, so I presume they're not going to be needing that right-of-way.
Right, and any right-of-way, obviously, they would not be transferring, but that's part of it. They also don't show within their box where the third main rail will come through, so there's a lot of work to be done. So I think I mentioned this back in November. The purchase price that is in the contract is what I believe to be the max, and we will find that it actually will be less than once we actually do a survey and do our due diligence to find out what parcel they're actually selling.
All right. Thank you. Just wanted to confirm. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Mr. Clerk, we have a motion and a second. When you're ready, please take the roll.
Kasarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Item 12D has been approved with a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent. Moving on to item 12E as in Eleanor, Consider Resolution Number 2022-05, Accepting Amendment Number 4 to the Operations and Maintenance Agreement with Caterpillar Power Generation Systems LLC in an estimated amount of $41,742. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Kasarag makes the motion, and Kilburg, a close second on the downhill. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, the city has an operation and maintenance agreement with Caterpillar Power Systems for operations at the Geneva Generation Facility. Amendment 4 of that agreement covers the costs associated with the calibration and software upgrades of the engine control software related to the pre-chamber check valve upgrade work. As stated, the estimated cost is based on number of days on-site and travel, and it's estimated to be $41,752. We do have Superintendent Holton with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Just a quick housekeeping check. I read 7:42. Is it 7:52?
Oh, it could be mine. 7:42.
It is 7:42. Okay, got it. Questions for Superintendent Holton from the dais? Mr. Clerk, we have a motion by Kasarag, a second by Kilburg. Please take the roll whenever you're ready.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Aye.
Item 12E has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes, and 0 absent. Item 12F as in finally, Consider Approval of Resolution Number 2022-06, adopting the fiscal year 2023, city of Geneva and TRICOM Central Dispatch budgets. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
Bruno, some moves.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Alderman Mayor makes the second. Stephanie? Anything additional?
No, basically, for the council's consideration are the proposed fiscal year 23 budget for the city of Geneva and the TRICOM Central Dispatch fiscal year 23 budget as well. The preliminary budgets were noticed in the Suburban Chronicle on January 19, made available at City Hall and on the city's website for public viewing. The city council was presented with the preliminary budget at a special committee of the whole on January 24, and the TRICOM Central Dispatch budget resolution was approved by the TRICOM Board of Directors at their meeting on January 13 and is included for formal adoption by the city council. With us this evening, we have all of your senior management team, so certainly if there are any questions, the appropriate person will be available to answer those.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, any questions for any of the department heads on any matter related to the fiscal year 2023 budget? Alderman Kasarag?
No questions for staff, but I do have some comments, if that's okay?
Sure.
So no surprise. I want to make some comments about the Geneva History Museum here. I don't want to be too repetitive with the comments I've made on financial support for the Geneva History Museum in the past. It's certainly been a learning experience for me. Over the last few months, I've learned a lot about the history of the history museum, how it came to be, how they moved to their current location on Third Street, and the importance of the museum to the public. I've been impressed with Terri Emma's passion for the museum, a passion that is obviously shared by many on this council. I wanted to write down my comments and read this because I don't want to say the wrong thing or be misconstrued. I support the Geneva History Museum. I support its mission. I support its leadership, and I support its value to the community. However, I think we are putting the cart before the horse here for a few reasons. First, we have no policy or framework for giving out the funds. How are they to be used? What will they fund? funds. How are they to be used? What will they fund? And how do they fit into the category of program support that will bring visitors to our community and support our hotels and motels? Even if Ms. Emma could answer those questions here, I think we should be establishing some standards for ourselves to govern ourselves by. I'll motion tonight to use these funds to establish a cultural heritage and arts fund, for which I propose a separate policy discussion on another evening. Second, dedicating the entire 20% or one-fifth of the tourism fund to the Geneva History Museum upfront, or any single organization for that matter, is short-sighted. Once we adopt a policy of giving to outside organizations, which I support, we're kidding ourselves if we don't think others will come asking too. What are we to tell another organization who maybe checks all the boxes? Sorry, we've given it all away? That's where the cultural heritage and arts fund makes sense. We can collect the applications for funding and go from there. Unfortunately, third, and unfortunately, I have to mention that this council has become aware of some concerns that were shared by the American Alliance of Museums during a review of a potential accreditation for the Geneva History Museum. Most important to me is how the museum doesn't adequately address diversity, equity, accessibility, and inclusion, among a few other issues. I don't want to exaggerate the apparent deficiency. I know Ms. Emma and the museum board and staff will work to rectify these issues as quickly as possible, but I'm concerned that on one hand, we have unanimously established the city's first DEI task force, and on the other hand, this council seems to not want to address it when it comes to the Geneva History Museum. I think our funding should be predicated on the correction of these issues, which no doubt will happen very expeditiously. Bottom line, put policy first. I agree we can support the Geneva History Museum and possibly other organizations. The funds allocated here will not be distributed to 2023. We have plenty of time to figure out the details. Please support my motion to establish a cultural heritage and arts fund, and I invite any feedback from the council they may have. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may just pause for a moment. Mr. Collins? I received a text from a resident tuning in saying they're watching a loop that says the webinar will begin momentarily. Is that a issue?
I think that's on their end, otherwise we wouldn't see the Alderman.
Okay. So forgive me, folks, if I text back this individual.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Pardon me?
I think we fixed it now.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Kosarag. Anyone else from the dais?
He said he made a motion.
Have you made a motion, sir? Forgive me.
I thought that I'd invite people.
Just to open it up for discussion.
I thought I'd open it up for discussion first and make the motion from there. Thank you.
The general framework is to establish a cultural heritage and arts fund.
Can I just speak to that?
Yes, you can.
So I just, to clarify, to create a new fund, I don't think is the appropriate motion. I think you would still, if you're still planning to use hotel motel tax dollars, it would just be a line item within that fund that already exists. So it wouldn't be actually a new fund.
Okay.
A new fund kind of supposes that you have new revenue.
Okay.
And I think it can stay in the program support line item. What your motion is, is that there would be no distributions.
To specific organizations.
To specific organizations, other than the one we already have, until you've had a policy discussion or whatever the council decides there.
Yes.
Is that a fair assessment?
Fair.
And there is no motion on the floor, per se?
Not yet.
There's an understanding of what might, but Alderman Mayor, did you have your hand up, or?
Yeah. So would you be thinking 20% for that line item, or discuss?
Open for discussion, but I'm feeling like that percentage of that line item is pretty set in stone from other Aldermen, but I'm open to discussing that.
That's all I have.
Anyone else on the dais, or virtually? Alderman Maladra, sir?
Thank you. So I agree with everything Brad said about the importance of.
Alderman Maladra, one moment. You sound like somebody in the Witness Relocation Program. So I'm gonna ask Pete, any suggestions, sir?
Turn this mic off and on again.
You turn your microphone off, then in two hours on?
I'm muted, and then unmuted. Any improvement?
No.
No. Okay, well, I'll come back later. I'm gonna switch microphones, I guess. I'll switch headsets.
Alderman Bruno, could you chime in just for the fun of it to see how you sound?
Do I sound okay?
That's a loaded question.
Do I have the floor now?
Alderman Maladra, you might have two microphones hooked in, correct, or no? Try it again?
Try it again. Any better?
No, shucks.
No? All right, hang on.
Have you tried kicking it? Have you? Alderman, I'm gonna go to Alderman Bruno, and we'll come back to you, correct? Sir, Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and good luck to Alderman Maladra. To Alderman Kosarag's point on the fund or the line item, I'm happy to have that discussion in the future. There's no reason we can't have that and maybe even somehow find ways to funnel more money into that. I'm perfectly happy to, after consideration, to leave it as is, certainly for this budget cycle. If something comes up down the line, we reconsider that. We can do that, but I'm comfortable with what we have right now. Thanks.
Okay, so is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. Mike, you can hear me, right?
I can hear you, Alderman Maladra. I can hear the council.
Yes, sir, you're ready to go. You're in good shape.
All right, I'm in good shape. Okay. And then what I'm, this is gonna be so anticlimactic, it's embarrassing, but anyway. So I agree with what Alderman Kosarag said about the, and it's what I alluded to when we discussed this last time, about philosophically, I understand the importance of the history museum to the City of Geneva. I also support the idea that the city should provide some level of funding for the history museum. I am bothered by the fact that we have no policy governing that type of action, but what bothers me the most, I think, right now about where we stand with this funding and this budget, is the lack of an agreement with the history museum. In our last discussion, I heard from a few people what I interpreted as basically the statement that we would provide significant funding to this organization with no strings attached, and I just think that's bad business. I'm also uncomfortable with trying to set policy on the fly. I agree with Alderman Kosarag that we need a policy governing this type of action, but to try and set it tonight, or indeed to try and get that policy set before this budget is due, I think is just, you know, working under a time pressure that we don't need. I think that we can proceed with the funding in this budget cycle with the understanding that we will be establishing a policy around this type of action, and that policy may change things for everybody down the road. But I am uncomfortable with proceeding without an agreement with the history museum, and perhaps the items in the letter that Alderman Kosarag mentioned could be addressed as part of that agreement. So my proposal would be that we include this in the budget, but that no funding actually take place until an agreement is put in place to the mutual understanding and benefit of the city and the history museum.
Anything else, Alderman Maladra?
No, sir, that's it.
You sound just great, by the way. Anyone else on the dais? Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. I'm curious, do we have any sort of agreement in place with the chamber?
We do, and we have for since 1999.
Okay, can you briefly summarize what it entails?
Sure, the agreement essentially lays out what their responsibilities are and what the city's responsibilities are. So as far as how the funding is used, how they are to report to the city, and that they are acting as the visitor's arm of the city.
Okay, is, would that language easily translate to the history museum, do you think?
I think it would be similar but different, if that makes sense, because it wouldn't be as the visitor's kind of arm, but it would lay out how they can spend the money, what that parameter is.
Sure.
For what purposes, not specific programming, but just that it has to go towards X, Y, or Z, and then how they would report back to the city that they're actually using it in that manner.
Okay, so that's a starting point for us, if we wanted to implement something like that.
The City of St. Charles has a similar, they have about a two-page agreement, very simple, that just, again, lays out those kind of parameters.
So I would be in favor of that, to appease council, I think. And then, just my opinion on the shortfalls that the history museum currently has, that Alderman Kosarag referenced, you know, giving them the funding after these shortfalls were met, you know, devil's advocate, I wonder if, with the help of our funding, if they could meet those shortfalls. So just something to consider. Thank you.
Before I recognize Alderman Bruno for a second time, anyone else who wishes to speak? Alderman Kilburg, sir, then Alderman Bruno?
I think from our prior discussion, and I brought this up at Strategic Planning Committee, or Strategic Planning Session in November, that I think that there should be some type of criteria and an opportunity for any other organizations to solicit if, in fact, it would fit a criteria. I think as it relates to the history museum, I think it was understood that there was going to be some contractual agreement, and that this wasn't just going to be a windfall for the history museum. I think there has to be some conditions. And when I made a reference that this doesn't give the city or the city council any authority over the Geneva History Museum, I simply meant that we weren't going to sit on their board of directors, and we weren't going to provide any type of oversight on the day-to-day activities of the center, or the museum, excuse me. But, you know, I think that this is, Third Street is a critical part of our community, and I think the history museum plays into that. With the fire, the fireplace, and everything that's happening on Third Street, we have a lot of retail outlets in Geneva that are already vacant. And if for some reason, over the next three or four years, the Geneva History Museum would not have sufficient funding to continue to operate, I think we'd be making a serious mistake. So I'm saying that this is, I think, maybe a gesture of goodwill. It's also a gesture of commitment to our community and a commitment to Third Street. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bruno, then Alderwoman Burkhardt.
I can give the floor to Alderwoman Burkhardt, since she hasn't spoken before.
If you'd like. Alderwoman Burkhardt.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree with Alderman Kilburg and Alderman Ruby, that I, you know, I think an agreement can be put in place that would meet some of the concerns of the council. I would trust city staff to figure out the framework for that agreement, perhaps looking at what St. Charles has with its history museum. I think what, you know, Alderman Kilburg's saying, no, we don't want to micromanage the history museum, or tell them what exhibit they should have next month, but we'd like some accountability for them to, once a year, come before us, tell us a little bit about, you know, what progress has been made in the year behind, looking back, and how, you know, the money from the city, what they were able to use it for. I, you know, I really appreciate that we've had a really robust conversation about this, but I do feel like it's probably time to wrap it up soon and move on. So, thank you.
Alderman Bruno, sir, and then Maladra.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, I just wanted to get clarity. If Alderman Maladra's points were to turn into a motion, you're saying leave the line items as is in the presented budget with the caveat that nothing's released until we develop that agreement? Is that what I was hearing?
That's exactly what you're hearing, yeah. If you'd like to make that motion, go ahead.
Well, before you make the motion, and I think everyone knows this, the placeholder in the budget is one thing, the appropriation commitment is another thing. As all of you know, through that tourism fund, if in fact, whatever this council decides in terms of the amount, the percentage, what have you, the first check, as it were, to be cut to benefit the history museum, just like the first check to be cut to benefit the chamber, is not done so until almost a year from now. I don't want anyone to walk out of here assuming that when and if we approve the entire budget with a placeholder of X percent or X amount of dollars, the check's cut May 1. It's not cut until a year from now, because of course, that we have to wait for all those receipts to come in from overnight stays, as it were. I think everyone knows that, but I just wanted to throw it out there. Alderman, Alderman Caven, sir? Mayor? Then Maladra. Caven, then Maladra.
Well, I know we kind of talked about some of this the last time around as well. I think that there are going to be other organizations. As one had already reached out as we were finishing that other meeting, in my opinion, dedicating 20% of that entire fund to one specific place is too high. I know that I said that the previous time as well. I still feel that way. I definitely appreciate the museum as well, and I don't have any issue with doing any funding, but if we can expect that there is going to be more to come, and we want to make it more like a line item, and leave it at that 20% for whoever comes forth to apply for those on an annual basis and show what those, and show what those, you know, merits or reasoning is, 20% of the overall fund to the history center, I think is, I think is too high, because I think there's going to be other people coming and asking for money, and then we're gonna be looking to try to find funds for that as well if we already commit that full 20% to the history museum. So I believe that that percentage is too high.
Thank you, sir.
And one more question. If we were to go through and pass this, and it, whatever it winds up being like that, whatever the 20% is, like that $50,000, is it written that that just starts happening like that from this point forward? Would we then have to come back and modify something if it's passed with the current language of how it sits right now in front of us? Because if we say, well, let's give them the commitment this year, but is that really the way it's put together?
So the budget is on an annual basis, so every year the budget comes forward. However, if you have an agreement in place that spells out what that is, then that's what supersedes. So for example, the chambers is year after year because they have an agreement in place. The agreement can continue year after year because there is a termination clause within that agreement, that either party can get out of the agreement with a certain period of notice. So if you just put the money in the budget with no agreement, next year, it's, for lack of a better phrase, free game.
I think what Alderman Caven might be asking, correct me if I'm wrong, if no additional motions are made tonight, or if a motion is made to, quote, "stay the course," we then have a discussion based on the language in an agreement, and even a policy discussion that might affect that percentage, reserving some for other groups, I believe we would just amend the budget accordingly, since no checks have been written yet. Is that?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Okay. Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Mayor?
So before I continue with what I was gonna say, could you repeat what you just said about if no other caveats are made tonight, what happens?
It's my understanding that if the council chooses to abandon the discussion, and there's no motion made that differs from what's already been approved through the committee of the whole structure, and that is a 20% and/or $50,000 placeholder in the budget to benefit the Geneva History Museum, we put the budget to bed, then we have a opportunity to craft an agreement with the Geneva History Museum, or we choose to have a policy discussion on how best to do this, and the language in both those decisions differ from the placeholder exclusively for GHM, then we simply amend the budget to include other organizations. So there's no formal commitment tonight if we just say, put it in the budget and hold it. We need to have additional discussion regarding agreements and general policy.
Okay, then I have no comments.
That was so dramatic. It was like.
Sorry. There's no point in, there's no point in making a motion regarding an agreement or a policy if, by doing nothing tonight and letting the item fall into the budget, we have the opportunity to craft both an agreement and a policy moving forward.
That's correct. I think it's worth noting, though, that unless those most interested in this topic review the broadcast of this meeting, my concern is that the average consumer of what transpired here tonight will only hear that a placeholder has been put in to benefit one organization, not realizing that that could all change within a 12-month period. So to recommend as part of a motion, policy discussion, and manufacture of agreement, I think is just a safe harbor exercise, but that's me, so.
Okay, I like safe harbors. So I would move that the line item remain as is in the budget with the addition that we will. that we will breach an agreement with the History Museum and that we, as a council, will develop a policy for this type of action.
City Attorney, are you comfortable with that motion as worded?
I'm trying to understand it.
Okay. Or Ms. Dawkins, do you have any, want to opine on that?
So, the way the motion is stated, it...
It identifies...
It identifies that there's funding for the Geneva History Museum as long as there's an agreement that is reached. And then separately, there would be a policy discussion for this type of action, but that would come after the fact. And so if there's any additional funding identified at that point, chances are then you would need to find the funding source or an amendment.
What are we doing differently? What's being amended?
I don't know that it's being...
That's what I'm concerned about.
It would be amended after the fact.
I don't know what we're amending now, is what I'm saying.
Nothing.
They're proposing...
Other than, other than setting up, setting up future dates without date specific of policy and agreement drafting.
I don't think you need a motion for that, but, and I don't think it amends what's before the council.
It does not, right. That was my language, that I suggested we have it in writing so that there's clarity in terms of moving forward. That the money's not set aside for any organization without first policy and agreement crafting. Because otherwise, it's, well, there is no agreement, so just give the money.
I think it's somewhat...
Go ahead.
Super, yeah. An emotion to amend, amend is usually something that amends the budget. I don't hear any of that in this language. I, I get it, this is a safe harbor or a belts and suspenders thing, but technically, I don't think it's actually a proper motion to amend.
Would a proper motion to amend, and Mr. Maladra, I'm going to ask for your, or Alderman Caven's, would a proper motion to amend be to amend the budget recommendation supporting the Geneva History Museum to supporting external organizations for which, to yet be determined?
I don't want to make it difficult, I just don't know what that does.
Okay.
With all due respect.
So, so then we would go back to what I said earlier, there's...
I mean, you can all agree to visit this at the right time. Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any disagreement on that.
Right, there's no need for the motion, which is what I said earlier, so...
So you withdraw your amendment or your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Mayor, then Caven?
Okay, I think I'm more confused now than when I came in, so, um, let me just clarify. If it's in the budget right now and it's given a dollar value certain in the, in the budget, is that a, this 20% thing is what I'm getting at? That, let's say we bring in $500,000 into the tourism fund. We've set it to move towards that 20% and, and we could, you know, inadvertently give a windfall. Is there an approval necessary before the dispersment of this?
So I, I think that's what we were getting at. If there is a general consensus among this council that no dispersment can be made until such time as we have had that policy discussion, no motion is needed. It's a general consensus and, and the, the, the line item stays as-is, but there would be no expenditure until such time we had that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Caven, Alderman Kilburg?
Thank you. Would a proper motion to amend and take out the 20% and just put a dollar value on there that says, hey, this is what you can have next year, we can then have all of these other different discussions about changing as a line item and the whole thing? I don't know, I, I guess for me...
Yes, it would be.
I feel like that would be a lot cleaner and just say, instead of 20%...
So, and let me just clarify, so because you said 20%, the line item is for $51,000. So a proper motion would be to amend the budget to change that dollar figure.
Okay. For me personally, I would be more comfortable with doing that than whatever's kind of been happening here. I don't know if that would have support from a majority of people, but, but I would prefer, I would prefer to do that. So, since we're talking about wanting to move forward and have this for other areas that might be able to go as well, I would make the motion to amend and say, rather than the 20%, I would say $10,000 for this next year. And then we can look at that other part that is the, the 20% and putting that together for whatever other organizations may be interested and be looking for distributions.
There's a motion on the floor by Alderman Caven to amend the budget by indicating a $10,000 grant to the Geneva History Museum for fiscal year '23?
Yes. I don't know that anybody else is going to say anything, but...
Is there a second to that amendment?
Can I ask a quick question? I'll second.
Amendment's been seconded. The amendment is on the floor, Alderman Kocarog?
If there's no second, it's done.
Oh, he's...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Your, the floor is yours, if you'd like.
Well, I think if, this is what's going to be my question, but I'm still fine seconding it. I think what I'm hearing Alderman Caven say is, we're committing ourselves to $10,000 for the Geneva History Museum. We're open to funding other things as well, but that's subject to the policy discussion later. Is that, was that your intention?
Yeah, I'm not saying we're looking for applications right now, but rather than giving that large of a percentage away, okay, here is something for the History Museum and we can then have that discussion if that, about, if there are other things that we would consider or look at. Not that we're looking for other people to ask at the moment, but if we're going to have this sometime later on this year, then at least that's something that is, there's a certain amount of funding that they can count on that's committed and then this gives us the chance or the opportunity to, to talk about that. So, yeah.
Do I spell out the floor?
Yes, sir. The floor is yours, Brad, on the amendment. On the amendment offered by Caven and seconded by you?
On the motion.
On the motion, we can only discuss that. The motion to amend the budget, exactly.
Can I make a motion to amend his motion? I can, right?
You, you, you can.
Okay. So I would like to take this opportunity to amend Gabe's motion and establish the line item as the Cultural Heritage and Arts Fund and guarantee the Geneva History Museum at least $10,000 of that fund.
Chime in.
I, I think, I think that complicates it. We already have a program support line item, so I think it's appropriate to have, to keep with the line items as far as what we have across all funds and our numbering system. I know that sounds crazy, but it, but it really matters when we actually do audits and those kinds of things. So, I think what you're saying is essentially the same thing as Gabe was saying, for $10,000, that's, for lack of a better phrase, earmarked for the History Museum. So I, I don't, I mean, if you want to call it a cultural and whatever, cultural and whatever...
Heritage and Arts.
Grant or, or that kind of thing, but I think to talk about the actual line item in the budget, that's more of an accounting function as opposed to a nomenclature.
What I'm confused on, and maybe this gets Alderman Mayor's question, are we committing ourselves tonight to giving the Geneva History Museum 20% assuming that a policy is put into place?
The budget tonight includes $51,000 in program support to the Geneva History Museum as directed by the city council because $51,000 is 20% of the estimated revenues that are budgeted.
Correct.
So a budget, we don't, it's, it's based on the budget. So if revenues came in greater, we would come back and say, we've gotten more revenues, are we giving more if we don't have a policy in place? If you don't have an agreement in place. Right now, it is $51,000 that would be budgeted, assuming that that corresponding revenue came in.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I'll withdraw my amendment to the motion.
The amendment does stand, however, Alderman Caven's amendment with respect to a $10,000 grant fiscal year '23, seconded by Alderman Kocarog. Who did I promise next? Forgive me, I believe Alderwoman, Alderman Kilburg, then Alderwoman Ruby? Yes, sir.
I think the discussion we've had here for the last 15 or 20 minutes should come under new business and, and direct the staff to develop a policy and guidelines as it relates to the dispersal of any funds that might fall into this category. I think, again, this is a budget, you know? I think getting into the, getting into the detail, I, we all understand that there's going to have to be some type of a working agreement between the, the History Museum as it relates to these funds. And I'm saying that the action that we should take tonight is under new business potentially and, and asking the, the staff to prepare a draft, maybe have some preliminary discussions with, with the History Museum as it relates to what the criteria of that, that agreement might be. So, I mean, you know, we spent, you know, we spent about an hour and a half on this at a prior meeting and now we're going to, you know, we spent about 45 minutes on it again tonight here. So I'm just saying, it's a budget and budget is, is simply a guideline, isn't it?
It's a plan, yes.
Yeah, it's for planning purposes. So, we, I think there's a lot of elements of the budget that's probably a lot more relevant and important to the city than, than this one item, so that's all I have to say. And I'll bring it up under new business if, if you'd like, and I probably will.
Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. I think we're overcomplicating this and I personally am not interested in opening this up and asking other people to put in applications for grants. I think that the Geneva History Museum parallels the chamber in the benefits to our city and that's why my focus is, is on the History Museum. And I would love to vote. Can I call the question on this?
You can call the question on this.
It's on the amendment?
It's on the amendment, and that is Alder, it's on the amendment. Alderman Caven's amendment to...
Proper motion.
To allow for a maximum of $10,000 to the Geneva History Museum in fiscal year '23. That amendment was seconded by Alderman Kocarog. The question has been called by Alderwoman Ruby. If the clerk is ready, this is voting on the amendment, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Bruno, nay.
Burkhardt?
Nay.
Ruby?
Nay.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, nay.
The motion has failed with two in the affirmative, eight in the negative. We are back to discussing the main motion, which was back in 1975. And that is to help, yeah, pass the budget as presented. With the caveat that we all understand, based on, I believe, consensus that we will have discussion regarding a policy that we could incorporate regarding external organization funding and, obviously, working with the History Museum in terms of an agreement. So, we're back to square one, ladies and gentlemen.
Let me move, we approve item F. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion already on that.
Yes.
Okay, we sure do. My sense is, ladies and gentlemen, if I may, that, and this is reflective of the time when the History Museum staff were with us in this very chamber, we do have, I believe, some important work to do with their team in terms of issues that Alderman Kocarog raised and others. By no means has anyone in this room, and I doubt very few people in the community, don't believe in, appreciate, acknowledge, either personally, professionally, or otherwise, support the mission and vision of the History Museum. But I do believe that irrespective of whether we feel other organizations are not currently in a position to also seek support, the reality is that I suspect we will see many. And of course, as we all know, the crux of this support is conditioned upon the language in the tourism fund. And that language states explicitly, explicitly overnight accommodations. I think there's creative ways to spur such things and I look forward to working with whomever, if there's an interest in doing so. It's also fair to say that if we experience a down year, any grant would be impacted as well. And of course, just for underscoring, italicizing, and bolding, one year from today, at the earliest, will any expenditure be made to any organization? So, just to clear. We do have a motion. I believe that was Alderman Jones from 1862 who made the motion and...
That guy up there with the beard?
And we have a second. Anyone else questions, comments regarding this matter? Alderwoman Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just talk about the budget on a macro level, which we haven't really gotten to do. We've been pretty drilled down, down to this $50,000 grant. But the city administrator, I mean, how confident do you feel about this budget? You've been here with the city of Geneva a long time. I mean, you can't have gone through time, well, you were here for the recession, but, I mean, we're just in such times of uncertainty. I, I look at this and I just wonder still, you know, what's around the corner? And we don't know what's around the corner, but do you feel confident in the planning by your department heads that you've put together the most realistic or solid working plan that you can?
Yeah, and I think it goes to a comment that was made on the 24th about general fund in particular, that our revenue budget was believed to be underestimated, that we were being too conservative. And I think that goes to that uncertainty, that we were being conservative in, in crafting this budget and building this budget, so that if revenues do, do exceed expectations, there's opportunities there. We have a lot of things that we've talked about doing, and I think I mentioned that as well. Those were not put into the budget so that we have time to, to plan out those expenditures and make sure that we have the revenue to support them. But overall, I think it's probably one of the, best budget, sounds like a bad name, but I think it's a very good budget. And I think we're fortunate where, where we stand because of the good planning that this council and leadership has done over the last 10 years since the recession. Well, thank you for your work and thank you to all our department heads who are here tonight on crafting this budget. Thank you.
According to my cheat sheet, folks, we're at new business and public comment. But we haven't voted yet, so we have to do that. It's always nice to see people chime in when they see the...
Got to finish this.
Holy mother of God. Okay, anyone else, comments regarding? This is to annex St. Charles. Any comments? Mr. Clerk, if you're still with us?
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye. Under item 12F, ladies and gentlemen, adopting the fiscal year '23 city of Geneva and TRICOM Central Dispatch budgets, the votes are 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent. With that, we jump to item 13. We do have, I know a gentleman here with us from Marmion High School who's a sophomore. Do you have any questions for, Bud, correct? Your name, Bud, right? Boyd, forgive me. Any questions for us, Boyd? Did you enjoy your experience? You can tell me afterward if you want to. How's life at Marmion? Good?
Very good.
Good to hear. We're glad you're here. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience, public comment about anything? From the dais, new business, Mr. Kilburg, sir?
As a follow-up to our discussion earlier in the meeting, I asked staff if they would spend some time reviewing what was discussed as it relates to an agreement with, with the Geneva History Museum and maybe any other information that they might be able to share with us. And if, if they could prepare that and include that in a committee of the whole meeting in the near future, we can have, we can continue our discussion and develop some parameters as it might relate to the dispersal of these types of funds at, at the present, as it relates to 2022, '23, as well as we look to the future. And that's just, don't need a motion.
Right.
Just need to make sure we have general consensus.
Yep. Anyone disagree with that? Very good. Any other new business? The Olympic flag is flying in front of City Hall. Let it be known that we have a young man from St. Charles North High School on the speed skating team. Isn't that cool? Yeah, so.
And Mayor, I have a cousin that's skating right now.
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mia Kilburg, she's competing for the United States in the fifteen hundred meter.
Wait a minute, really? Why didn't you tell us that, man?
Well, it's just-
Where, where's home for her?
Uh, she lives in Cincinnati. Her husband's a, a neurosurgeon, and that's my uncle's grandson.
My gosh.
And his wife, Mia Mangella, it's Italian. Ma, how do you pronounce it?
[laughing].
I call him-
Manjanello.
Manjanello Kilburg. So she competed already in the three thousand and didn't do too well, but she's in the fifteen hundred, and that's more her event, so.
So you have a niece who's an Olympian?
Not a niece. It would be my brother's granddaughter's wife, or grandson's wife.
This is more difficult than the budget, I guess. It's like-
But it does have the name Kilburg attached to it.
Well, that's all that matters.
I've had questions already about that.
Oh, I bet, yeah. And, and just for the record, Alderman Kilburg actually skated with Sonja Henning. So it was like, for the-
And I, I competed in Berlin, too.
[laughing].
But Jesse Owens-
You look good, man.
Jesse Owens was about that far in front of you.
Alderwoman Burkhardt?
I hate to do this and kill the mood, but when Alderman Ruby called the question, shouldn't we have voted on whether it was time to vote on the question?
We did.
We did.
No, we voted on the amendment.
That's what was in front of us.
That was in front of us, yeah.
Don't we have to vote to immediately call the question? I mean, can anybody just say, I call the question, and we have to vote? I thought you had to vote.
Once the question's called-
Robert's rule says it has to be a two-thirds majority.
Would you rather go back and start over again? I suspect there was no-
No, I just, I feel like we've done this a few times, like, I have a feeling that-
Okay, well, what is the real, what is, let's defer to the city's-
Yeah, hang on a second.
The results would be no different, but if, if I'm in error, then I'm in error.
It's a two-thirds vote. No, move to, to the previous question, or call the question, is, is the second's needed, it's not debatable, and it's two-thirds votes required.
To, to actually call, to move forward.
To end debate.
Right, but we didn't do that.
Yeah, we, it was unanimous.
We just voted on the amendment.
She's right.
Yeah, no one voted.
Oh, you're right, we didn't move on the, on the question itself, we went right to the question itself.
Yeah, and we have done that repeatedly over the years, I forget.
No, 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 but, 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 no, we have not done that repeatedly over the years.
We have done it several times.
We have made mistakes, and I accept, I accept mistakes, and I had an honor, and I own those mistakes. But if we, all of us know better than all of us combined, then chime up, chime in, say something.
Well, and I just did. I'm just saying, I know Alderman Kil-
After that.
Well, I didn't realize it till after. I just said to Becky, did we vote on your call the question? We didn't. So, I know we've talked about a parliamentarian, I'm trying to keep us honest here, I was gonna let it pass because-
Well, there's no dishonesty.
I, I will take responsibility for not, I mean, we assumed we all wanted a vote on the, the amendment. We should have taken a vote on Alderman, uh, woman's, uh, motion to call the question. No question about it. I'll take responsibility for that. With all due respect, if someone has a question in real time, that's a point of information or clarification, a parliamentary procedure point can be immediately made and then deferred to the chair. So, we, we can do that in real time. My fault for that.
This meeting has not been closed, so I would entertain a motion to reconsider item twelve F if anyone is so interested, and we can bring this matter back to the floor. And that is a legitimate request, if anyone has that. Is there anyone interested in reconsidering?
I'm comfortable with the outcome, I just, like I said, it, and I do know that Alderman Kilburg, at least one other time, we've talked about, we kind of skipped a point. It's just important to remember, because otherwise a call to question couldn't cut off debate without everybody being on the same page.
True.
And I didn't think of it in the moment, I thought of it after, and I almost let it slide, but I decided-
Is there anyone who wishes to reconsider item twelve F? Chair determines there's nobody, okay. Anything else, new business? Thank you, Alderman Burkhardt.
So, regarding these agreements, and let's talk about the agreement with the Chamber as an example. If we did want to terminate, what vote does it require to do that? Determine, like, is it a council decision when we decide to terminate agreements, or is it administrative?
Yeah, I mean, it, it could be either, but ultimately, the council has the final say. So it could be the other party could offer to terminate, in which case you don't have the say, as long as they meet the, whatever the daily requirement is. It could be a staff recommendation, but staff doesn't have the ability to terminate a contract, it would have to come from the city council to terminate that agreement. Typically, it's a simple majority vote, unless there's language in there indicating otherwise.
A motion to adjourn the city council meeting is in order. Anyone care to offer that motion? Alderman Marks makes that motion. All in favor of adjourned, please indicate. What, what did I do wrong?
Becky using her, her ways with words to say I did a good job.
Ah, I'll second that. Thank you. What the hell's your name again? Marks, is it? Marks made the motion, all in favor of adjourned the city council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No, aye.
Maladra, aye.
Just a moment, folks, we'll switch over to the committee of the whole. Alderman Marks is chairing.
Are on, right now, so I will, I am Alderman Richard Marks. I, along with Alderman Kosarog, are the aldermen of the second ward. It's my honor to chair this meeting tonight, and I call it to order. That is item one. Second item is to recommend suspending the rules to permit Alderman Marks to be the chairman of the meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda.
So moved.
By Alderman Kosarog, seconded by Alderman Kaven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, aye.
Oh, excuse me, yes, everyone, all aldermen are present. Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is to approve the committee of the whole minutes from January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and special committee of the whole minutes from January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Making the motion by Alderman Swanson, seconded by Alderman Kilburg. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, aye.
Vote is unanimous. Item of business, items four, four A is to consider a draft ordinance amending Title Four Business and License Regulations, Chapter Two Liquor Control, Sections four dash two dash eleven and four dash two dash thirteen, creating a Class C eight brew pub license.
Bruno, so moves.
Motion by Alderman Kaven, seconded by Alderman Bruno. Comments, questions?
Do you want me to?
Yes, if you could, please.
Sure. So in twenty twenty-one, Penrose Brewing requested a change in their license classification to align with their current business model, to have the ability to offer additional alcoholic beverage options for private and public events at the brewery. I do believe that we have the applicant present with us this evening, in case you have additional questions, but we did not at the time have a license that fit what they needed to do, so that's why this is before you this evening.
Alderman Bruno?
Uh, thank you, Alderman Marks. For the applicant, I suppose, what, what mechanically are we going to see differently, or what are you going to be able to do now, you know, in, in explicit terms that you can't do now?
If you could just give us your names, please.
My name's Tom Quarter, brewer and co-founder of Penrose, and-
I'm Brad Novak.
Thank you.
So really, what this does is it aligns us with our state and federal licensing. The way the Illinois state licensing has been broken down is that, this brew pub license allows you to, doesn't allow you to self-distribute, allows you to serve outside wine and spirits, and that's really one of the main items for us, just to be able to diversify our offerings, give people who are renting out the place, wine or spirits, options of small select menu. That's the majority of one, and if we ever do have a secondary location, this also allows us to self-transfer in between two said locations without going through a beer wholesaling. So, we don't currently have a secondary location, but just having our options open in the future.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Any, any other questions for the applicants? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote. Item four B is to consider a draft resolution authorizing a farm lease with Pitstick Farms at a cost of three hundred and thirty dollars per tillable acre at the Prairie Green Preserve for the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three crop season. Is there a motion on that?
No.
Motion by Alderman Mayor, second, seconded by Alderman Burkhardt. Any questions, comments on this?
I'll just give a brief background.
Oh, please, go ahead, I follow that.
Um, staff publicly solicited lease proposals for farming the two hundred and forty acres at Prairie Green. It was published in the Daily Herald and posted on the city's website. Pitstick Farms was the only proposal received. The bid for the twenty-two and twenty-three seasons is a cash rent lease rate of three hundred and thirty dollars per tillable acre for both seasons. Pitstick Farms has used environmentally sound farming methods at Prairie Green Preserve, and over the years, they have developed a unique knowledge of the Prairie Green Preserve site and maintain a compatible use relationship between the prairie wetland areas of the site and the farmed areas. We have David DeGroot here with us this evening to answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions for Director DeGroot? Okay. Hearing none.
I, I guess I have to ask one question.
Okay, go ahead.
As it relates to, what are some of the unique practices, and what's their understanding of the site that would make them unique as, as a, as a renter? What, I mean, obviously, they've done this for some time, is there anything else?
Not that I can offer up, I, I think that is, what makes them unique is that they have an intimate knowledge of the site, they've been farming it for over ten years. I don't think we've ever had another renter on the site.
You know, I, I brought this up a couple of years ago, that, there's federal programs that we could take advantage of. You know, as we talk about a green community, we're crop farming, and a lot of this corn goes to ethanol production. And again, it's a small statement, is all that I'm saying. And we have a reserve that we're crop farming. I mean, that, there's something about that, I guess, that, you know, and I come from an ag background, you know, farmers supported my, our family my entire life, but I'm just saying, as it relates to Geneva, and as it relates to Peck Farm, I'm just saying, I think that this is an area that we should look at, again, at some point in time into the future. Now, the other thing is, is if you looked at the question I raised, we're not getting a full three hundred and thirty dollars an acre out of this, and, and again, it seems that, you know, not every farmer benefits when there's poor growing conditions. But if they can't farm it, or if they have a crop failure, or if it's drought, guess what? They're home free. I mean, they don't have any expense then, other than the fact that they did put seed possibly in the ground, and that there was an expense associated with that, and obviously, it's expensive to put a crop in the ground. But I'm just saying that if we're looking at wildlife in the area, you know, we've got a coyote problem in Geneva, and if you have more natural habitat, the potential for those coyotes continuing to move into Geneva, I think, would be reduced as well. That's all I have to say, and I'll probably vote to support this, but I'm just saying that it's an area that I don't think we should just necessarily take for granted, that we should continue to take a look at. Because I researched it the last time, and based off of what we received this year, I think if we got into a long-term federal program, that we would generate a comparable amount of revenue as well, so.
So I, I would, and, and David can address this better, but we did investigate those programs, we investigated them two years ago, we revisited it again this year, and everything that we've looked at, the city itself is not eligible to apply for those programs. The city could give the property to this farmer, and the farmer could apply, but the city itself is not an eligible participant, and I think you, also, the area we're in. So if, David, if you want to speak a little bit to that-
It's, we're not eligible because it's publicly owned land, first. If we could work out a creative agreement with the tenant, it's a ten-year commitment, and there's penalties and paybacks if you don't commit for the ten years. We can only enter into two-year leases with the, with the farmer, so that makes it, that challenging. And then we're also not located in a conservation priority area, which would make our, our qualifying the site very difficult in the application process.
Well, the conservation officer I took to service this area a few years ago-
Microphone.
They do have working relationships, excuse me. They did have working relationships with municipalities in Illinois, one or two, very similar situation. Now, I don't know who you talk to, all I'm saying is, I think that it's something that, you know, we're not going to debate here tonight, but I think it's something that we need to continue to explore as we look at Peck Farm into the future. Thank you, that's all I had.
Alderman Mayor?
So, I, I'm sorry, I don't know what you talked about two years ago, are you talking about leaving it fallow to restore more prairie, or?
That's right. Essentially, that's what a set aside program is.
And then, uh-
In other words, the federal government pays you to idle that farmland.
Okay. And how much do we make off of the rental usually?
At three hundred and thirty an acre, we would have eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars a year.
But we didn't appreciate that, or we didn't benefit to that amount for the last two years.
The, the agreement for the last two years was at two hundred and sixty-one dollars an acre, so it was sixty-three thousand and some change a year.
Okay, I, I have nothing else.
Good, thank you. Alderman Burkhardt?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I will probably vote for this tonight, but I just want to support Alderman Kilburg. I would like us to continue to keep an open eyes for this, if there are any opportunities where we could turn this back into green space, or, or, you know, look into any programs that we can benefit from, I'd certainly be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there anyone online? I guess I should ask that question, I haven't asked that. Is there anyone that has?
No one online, raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor to support four B, item four B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, aye.
It was unanimous. Item four C is to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a market license agreement between the City of Geneva and, I don't even know how to say that, Benson now, USA for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four French market seasons. Do I have a motion?
Bruno, so moves.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Mayor.
Okay. So, Ben Sidoun, USA operates the French market at the Fourth Street Siegel Public Parking Lot. A two-year market lease is being proposed. As in previous years, the license provisions include an annual license fee, and they are responsible for the setup and tear-down utility costs and cost to update the parking signs. The annual fee was raised from five hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars based on a number of factors and comparisons to fees and services paid in nearby communities. The French market is a tourist attraction and an economic driver for the downtown on Sundays, and the market also offers residents a place to gather and socialize while providing access to desirable goods. Director Timoshenko is with us this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Is there any questions or comments? No one online also? Just-
No one online.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bruno, aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Item four D is to consider draft resolution awarding a bidding contract to Shermco Industries in the amount of $55,502 for the 2022 substation preventive maintenance contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Kasserag, seconded. Seconded by Alderman Mark, Mayor. Any comments or questions?
First, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, please.
The electric division staff is undertaking a preventative maintenance program for Geneva substations. The goal is to maintain the division's high reliability and obtain data to make capital planning and maintenance recommendations. The requested work was quoted through the National Purchasing Cooperative Alliance in an amount of $55,502 under the Shermco Industries contract. And again, we still have Superintendent Holton with us if you have any specific questions for him.
Any questions, comments? Alderman Kasserag?
Could you just give me the layman's version of what this is and what we had been doing? And, um.
Sure.
I don't know. It was a little over my head, I guess.
That's okay. Understand. So we have power transformers, we have circuit breakers in all of our substations. We have protective relays that control the circuit breakers. Industry best practice is to go through and test and service all that equipment on a regular basis. Currently, we do that on a five-year rotation. This will be our second time through these substations. So it's just, it's just to make sure everything's working like it should, and there's no gotchas out there waiting for us that could cause a sustained outage or, or anything like that.
And so, um, and we're just, so we're just establishing a policy to do that testing over the course of five years?
Yeah, we started, we started five years ago. So we've gone through all the substations once now, and now we're going back through them again at five years. Five years is an industry standard. Some of the devices, there's a piece of equipment on the side of the transformer called a load tap changer. Those need to be opened up, cleaned, inspected on about a five-year basis. So while we have the substation down, we're just gonna, we just do everything while we have the opportunity.
But what we're doing tonight is just establishing that policy.
What we're doing tonight is engaging the people to do the preventative maintenance.
Okay.
Right.
I think that management policy threw me off a little bit. Gotcha.
We're on the next item.
Oh.
We're on the item before that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got you. That was my question, was about the next item, sorry.
Oh, okay. Alderman Berghardt?
Thank you, Chair. How long does it take to, to service each of these substations?
We budget a week per substation. Usually takes three days, maybe four at the outside. So we'll do one, one week and get it, get it all back in service, and then we'll do the other the next week, so.
And how many do we have?
Substations?
Yeah, substations.
I believe we have eight.
And this is all in the name of electric reliability, which everybody.
Right.
Appreciate, so. Good. I mean, what is the council can we do to help you with this? Just approve this tonight and.
Approve it.
Keep giving the money going. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Alderman Marx. This is something of an aside, but this was quoted through the National Purchasing Cooperative Alliance. Has that term come before us before? Is this something equivalent to going out for bids ourselves?
Yeah, so we've used Shermco for the past three years. It's been through this National Purchasing Cooperative Alliance contracts. The, there's several, there's several alliances or companies out there that do this. They, they prebid government contracts, so they go through the same process that we do. They write a spec, they put it out, they receive multiple bids, they take the lowest qualified bidder. And then we, we belong to these associations, and as long as we belong to them, we can take advantage of those contracts. So the, the bidding and vetting and everything is done for us. So it saves us, it saves us, you know, time, basically.
Oh, yeah, certainly. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or, or questions? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of this, vote aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous also. Item four E is consider draft resolution adopting an energy risk management policy participation in the PJM market. I need a motion and a second. Motion by Alderman Berghardt, seconded by Alderman Kilburg. Stephanie, I'll remember that this time?
Thank you. So the city of Geneva participates as a load-serve entity in the PJM market. As a condition of this activity, PJM requires a risk management policy to be adopted to assure that the city will be able to meet its financial obligations to PJM. In the years past, the city has operated under the risk policy of the company providing PJM operating services. However, PJM recently changed its internal policy to no longer allow the practice. So we're creating our own policy. And while I know there are some questions, I'm going to ask Superintendent Holton to try to address the question that Brad was actually asking on the last item.
Okay, so, um, we are a load-serving entity within PJM, just like the preamble said in the, in the, the agenda item. There's, there's a lot of financial risk operating in the power market, and PJM runs the market, so we're, we're part of PJM. We, in the past, when PJM would ask us for a risk policy, we'd say, okay, well, we're operating, IMPA's actually providing our services in PJM, so we're following, so they're providing those services for us, so they're following their risk policy. And here's the, here's our purchasing policies, so on and so forth. And PJM said, okay, that's fine. There's been a change at PJM. From what I understand, there's been a little bit of staff turnover, so they've got new people in there. And they're saying, okay, you can no longer do that. If you want to participate in PJM, city of Geneva, you have to have your own risk policy. So we actually took IMPA's risk policy, modified it for our own needs because we're not, you know, we're not a statewide agency. We're just the city of Geneva. And that is, that's what's before you. Essentially, what it does is it says, okay, you can, you can participate in these kind of transactions. Hedging is the big one. You can't speculate, you know, and you need to make sure whoever you're entering these hedging contracts with is a viable company. A little bit of history, PJM has had several market participants that vanished and kind of left everybody holding the bag for these very, very large contracts. And that had to be spread over all of the market participants. So these risk policies are supposed to prevent that from happening.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of item four E, say aye. Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item five. Any public comment or new business? Does anybody have any? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll move on. The next item is for a closed session on the purchase or lease of real property for the use of public body. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mayor, seconded by Kasserag. This will be a roll call vote.
Mayor and Kasserag?
Yes.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasserag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
We will turn off the mics.
I would note that there's no action to be taken, so we will, this meeting will close and we'll come back in session afterwards, but there is no action.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We're turning off the mics and then clear the room. Thank you. I need a motion for, to go back into open session, please.
So moved.
Alderman Swanson, you need a second?
Second.
Alderman Caven, and that is roll call. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back in open session. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Berghardt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Microphones are off.
Nice job.